Supervisor Hemmings, and then it'll be your cue to start the meeting. So it takes her about 30 seconds or so to get the YouTube stream going. So she will, she will start that process right at, right at 10.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Delmar County Board of Supervisors Meeting. It is the 10 o'clock hour. It's Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. So. We are going to now take a moment of reflection. And now if you'll please stand and Supervisor. You will lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Introduction of new employees. Do we have any, do you know?
I believe we did have some. We had an employee be introduced. I'm not sure who it was in regards to the department.
Anybody out there got new employees?
Heather Snow is raising her hand here.
Oh, okay. Heather, bring it off.
Hi, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I have two employees that I would like to reintroduce. This is a big moment for behavioral health because since we integrated mental health and AOD over a year ago, this is the first time that we've had both of our manager positions filled at the same time. So it's great news. I would like to introduce our new clinical services manager. Her name is Chris Staretz Foot. She has a C I D in clinical psychology and she's a licensed marriage and family therapist. Chris has worked actually for Delmar, Delmar County a while ago, and she's returning to us, which is always good news. And she's going to be co-managing behavioral health with Cheyenne Hogan, who's worked for the county for over a decade. And Cheyenne was promoted to program manager last November. She's really been an essential person in keeping our behavioral health team moving forward and the services going. And I'm really proud of both of them, and I'm optimistic about how their leadership together is going to help us meet the community needs. So I think that they are on and would like to just say hello real quick. They should be raising their hand.
Okay. We're ready for you.
Cheyenne, can you hear us?
Then she's unmuted, so I'm not sure.
I think she must be having some issue with her mic.
Okay, well. Welcome to the both of you. And if you get a chance to chime in later, please raise your hand and we'll try to get you on. We'd love to hear from you, but at this point, I think we'll move on. County Council, anything to report from closed session?
There is nothing to report.
Thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to pull item number 10 from the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll pull number 10 for the consent agenda. We can do that when we get to that consent, but we can pull that. So at this point, we are going to move on and receive brief reports or announcements relative to the County of Delmar programs, projects, progress by two by two committees, goal committees, and/or board, staff, training, travel, whatever. We're going to start with Supervisor Berkowitz.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we last met, I had the opportunity to listen to a speaker from the Area One Agency on Aging. She talked about the various opportunities for seniors to engage with Area One Agency on Aging through funding for the federal programs of the Older Americans Act. Like the rest of the members of the board, we met in a special session. And I attended that, of course. At the end of last month, Supervisor Gitlin and I attended the meeting of the Redwood Transit Authority, where we discussed the 2020 service plan and approved the minutes of the May 29th Board Workshop. We also discussed the 2020 bus stop improvement projects. Last Friday, I met with Chairman of the UROC Tribal Organization, so Joseph James, along with Councilmember Ryan Ray. We discussed a number of issues of mutual interest. And lastly, I continue to hear from constituents and breath and businesses about when the county will return to normal with businesses able to open up. I hope that Dr. Ray Rollwell can begin to continue to give us an update at every meeting. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had several two by two by twos with Supervisor Cowan as it relates to item number 17 on our agenda today. Specifically, a ballot initiative set for November, which we'll have further detail in discussing. But I believe we've had three meetings since our last meetings, all special meetings with the city, the school district, the fire district, and hoping to move a ballot initiative forward. In addition, local transportation commission meeting where we approved some outstanding items. But in addition, worked on items around up by crossroads and Highway 199, where speed continues to be an issue carrying forward with a fast rate of accidents that continues to increase on that highway. Hopefully Caltrans in looking at a campaign here to begin soon will be able to address some of these speed issues that are causing a great deal of accidents. Met with County Council. Thank you, Joel, for the welcome and excellent job and start to your new position. I really look forward to working with you here in the next four years. In addition, had a tri agency meeting where we discussed some issues around wind power and settling our debt with USDA. Also met with Kevin O'Donnell with the Japanese consulate on some sister city initiatives and meetings that they held live via webinar. And then also spoke with David Picker on NBC News. I'll hang on this item just for a second. There's going to be a soft launch of our story with Rikas and Takata starting tomorrow on NBC's Peacock Channel. You could order it just like anything you would on Netflix. This will be basically a 23 and a half minute episode, which you could get anytime you want. Up until the time of Olympics and beyond. The story will be called Kamome. It'll reflect our story with our sister city and more importantly, the passion of our children to return about to the city of Rikas and Takata, Japan. This is a neat opportunity for us to have kind of an entry level that will help not only our businesses, but tourism industry here in Delmar County. But in addition, we'll get a double dip when this re airs during the Olympics in 2021 in Japan. So pretty happy about that and looking forward to seeing it go live. As soon as there is a trailer available, we'll begin to broadcast that story. Hopefully through the Chamber of Commerce and the city's efforts. Spoke with Phil, Phil Barrington. Philip has been working with Smith River, Smith, Smith River Alliance and various other groups, including the county and Heidi Kuntz, still on working on the Fred Haight Boat Ramp at Saxton's and trying to seek money to improve that entire facility. They missed the opportunity, but do now have a grant prepared to submit next year to the Wildlife Conservation Board in improving those facilities, but had a great deal of discussion and glad that all our partnerships are working towards a successful public facility here in the county, which will eventually be turned over to Delmar County to maintain and impermanent. Also been playing phone tag with Mike Koeman. I did want to mention him. Mike served the Delmar County Fish and Game Commission for a long period of time. He has resigned, which many of you board members have probably seen by now. We will miss Mike in his input, but I've asked and encouraged him via email to stay engaged as Mike is very in tune to river issues and ocean issues as it relates to sports fishing. Been working with California State Association of Counties on various initiatives as it relates to our general fund budget and the areas that we've been sliding in. In particular, the reimbursement through realignment of two big pots of money that will only take place if the feds decide to fund those areas. $750 million pot and also $250 million pot. If Delmar County does see that, that money, we will see about one little over a million in one pot and a little over 337,000 another. Hopefully those trickle downs for the federal government through the state then to us will take place. But we need to continue to push those efforts. Glad to see that the efforts in the Mill Creek Drainage, the old Relham Redwood property are now taking place. And they have an environmental document which will move forward with a programmatic plan to begin to thin some of the standing timber out there. It's long overdue since 2001 when that, that area of private ground turned into a state park. But I'm glad to see that there's some momentum and more importantly, jobs being created for our local community in that area to thin a very thick layer of forest ground. And then also paying particular attention to Gavin Newsom's announcement that he's going to release about 8,000 prisoners into our population. I'm fairly concerned about that. I don't know how it's going to take place. I've been trying to read up as much as I can. Hopefully we'll get further elaboration on it and how it might impact releases into our community from Pelican Bay. And that's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes, thank you very much. Received a bit of a slug in the stomach from the governor yesterday regarding the COVID-19 rollback. But our good, our news is good news in Delmar County. The latest report for the COVID-19 virus shows just under 3,000 tests administered, zero active cases, zero hospitalized, and of course, zero deaths, 61 inactive total. Pelican Bay State Prison reports zero infect infections of inmates. And the two staff who were infected many weeks ago have returned to work. I spoke with CDCR Director of External Affairs Christina Koha Bashvili in Sacramento regarding the recent outbreak of the novel virus at San Quentin. Some of those inmates, and there were four of them, were transferred to a CDCR institution in Susanville, and those inmates who were transferred were tested for the COVID-19 virus and were deemed to be negative. Regrettably, the test proved wrong and the virus was sent to CCC in Lassen County. June 8th, the governor suspended all inmate transfers, and that policy still holds except for emergencies. CDCR policy has been changed. While transfers, when transfers are resumed, all inmates transferred will be quarantined for at least 14 days, even if their testing shows negative. Again, Pelican Bay State Prison is currently COVID-19 free for inmates and staff. I'm very happy to report. Yes, regarding the special meeting we all attended June 25th, the board discussed the Godbee survey, which reported results of, of many of you who were polled suggesting that a 1% general sales tax requiring a 50% plus one vote on the November ballot without suggesting that they said the measure, the research looks that it's favorable. The Godbee report also disclosed data for a dedicated 1% tax for law enforcement only. That ballot measure, if directed by the board, would require a two thirds plus one vote for passage on the November ballot. More will be discussed on these tax items during our meeting today and see how you folks feel about this issue of taxes. Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, as Supervisor Berkowitz mentioned, Monday, June 28th. We discussed the free ride program as was mentioned. We also are continuing the deep cleaning of all vehicles during the virus. The authority discussed how it will spend SB1 monies on bus stop improvements, which include shelters, benches, signs, and signpost. The authority adopted its new budget for fiscal year 2020, 21 also. Our volunteer Pride and Community Group met on successive Wednesdays, July 1st and July 8th. Pick volunteers are assisting the city in weed abatement from sidewalks, curbs, and gutters on city maintained property. And an opportunity to promote the event on local radio, KCRE and KPOD FM, talking about the group Pride in Community. The pick group will meet every Wednesday through Sea Cruise at Battery Point Lighthouse Parking Lot at 10 a.m. to assist the city, which has experienced a hit on its transient occupancy tax as a result of motel, short-term vacation rentals, and RV parks. A local transportation commission met last Tuesday via Zoom. Commission approved CHP agreement for the safe program, also adopted several resolutions, including allocation of funds for pedestrian and bicycle administrative and planning, allocation of funds for operations at Redwood Coast Transit Authority. And finally, I shared part of my July 4th following Sheriff Apperson around town. The sheriff led a group of classical cars, trucks, and motorcycles on a parade of sorts. So we did have a parade called Cruise 101, which included a show and shine event at California Auto Image and a trip back to Brookings, where many of the vehicles started the Cruise 101 event. The evening, we watched some great private fireworks displays on the horizon. And I must tell you, July 4, 2020 was one of the best I've experienced. And I'm happy to tell you that the private sector really stood up and was, did a very good job in making July 4th a memorable holiday. And that's my report.
Thank you, Chairman. As many already before me spoke, we had a special BOS meeting discussing the potential tax going on to the ballot in November. And again, also a couple of city-county two by twos, some just the city-county, a couple of those. And then, of course, with the school district and the fire district, discussing the public safety tax that we're looking to put on the ballot. So a lot of discussions regarding that. Met with County Council. Again, Joel, congratulations. Thank you. Welcome. Really glad to have you. Thank you for taking the time to meet with me and go over issues dear, near and dear to my heart here in Delmar County. We had a Visitors Bureau meeting looking at upcoming years of with Lulish, who is running advertising and promoting of Delmar County and just how COVID plays into it as well as the lost revenues and TOT. Congratulations to Daphne Lambert with Delmar Mission Possible. Daphne was able to open a transitional kind of housing for women at a small, small scale last week and was able to meet with her and see what she's doing. Really proud of her, really proud of the work they're doing. Daphne is also the one who's running the showers, which the county is part of every Tuesday. So today, it's, it's a need in the community that's being fulfilled. And thank you to all who have been involved to keep the program running. Had several conversations with constituents ongoing about what's going on in our county, especially late as the last few days with Governor Newsom making changes. Glad that we're not on that hit list, as I call it. So Delmar County is okay, even though we are, you know, pulling back on some, some of our businesses. But the others that we are concerned about can move forward, which is good. And then had a great conversation with Erin yesterday from Assemblyman Wood's office. Just checking in with her and she's checking in with me and just going over things here in Delmar County. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Yes, thank you very much. Yeah, I had a few things going on also. As was reported, we had a special Board of Supervisors meeting. Was mentioned, tri-agency meeting, have a whale working group risk assessment, which there was no change in recommendation. And this season closes tomorrow, so we won't be needing anymore. Even though we will continue with our meetings, there won't be, there would be no impact on this scrap, commercial fishing operation because the season will be over. I did participate in the member, member golf tournament out at Delmar Golf Course. My wife and I quietly celebrated 47 years of marriage. My daughter won't tell you what her age is, but she celebrated a birthday quietly. I, over the Fourth of July festivities, I went to, went out to Wonder Stump Road and watched the Fort Dick Fire Department Parade, which consisted of about four or five vehicles. Didn't last too long, but we social distance ourselves as well as wearing masks. And it was neat to have some sort of a parade. And then, of course, watch the cruise that was organized at California Auto Image. We stood on our corner of North Crest Drive and our road and the family, while still social distancing, watched the older cars and, and nice cars drive down that route, waving our flags and cheering them on. So it was, it was really pretty neat, even though they were spaced out. They weren't all coming at the same time, so it took a while for that to pass. I had the Dungeon and Scrap Task Force Executive Meeting. I had a gender review. As was mentioned, we had a Delmar Local Transportation Commission meeting. I met with staff on agenda items. And I met with Joel, with County Council. And again, Joel, welcome. Thank you for that meeting. Very informative and great to have you on board. Appreciate you very much. Had a Forest Management Task Force meeting of the Northern Regional Prioritization Group. We had a update on possible grant opportunities. And I would like to, I'd like to give acknowledgement to my daughter Hillary, who was named as one of the hometown heroes. Very proud of her. And my granddaughter and grandson, both were the winners of the hometown hero scavenger hunt. So very proud of them in, in being able to do that whole thing. We made a trip out of it from Clamath to Smith River to Patrick Creek. So we covered the whole county. It was about a four and a half, four hour trek. And it was very enjoyable. They were in one car, we were in another, so we were doing our distancing. As Supervisor Howard mentioned, Mike Koeman had submitted his resignation for the local Fish and Game Commission. And I have been in contact with him. I asked him to reconsider. I think he's a very important part of that commission, and I truly hope he will change his mind and stay on. I don't know if that's possible, but I'm very hopeful. So with that, that's the end of my report. So we're coming up on the two, or on the 1025 item, which will be a public comment. Yeah, so I'm going to open it up for public public comment, public comment period 1025. Kylie, do we have any written public comment?
I have two written public comments, but one of the items is for the consent agenda and one is for the Elkhuff disease presentation. So I was going to wait on those.
Okay, well, we'll hold on to those then, and we'll open this up for public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments. The board takes up that matter and you will be limited to three minutes or 3,000 characters if it's written. And this is a time for comment only. This is not a time for dialogues. So we are not going to do a back and forth thing, but open, welcome your public comments. And if it arises to needing to be put on the agenda for the next meeting, we'll look into that. So Kylie is a comment.
Chairman Hemmings, and I do believe maybe we could also bring on Cheyenne Hogan and maybe Chris Staretz Foot. They're both now available, I understand. I think Cheyenne raised her hand.
Okay, great.
Cheyenne, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, you're good.
Great. So this is Chris Staretz Foot. I'm a new clinical services manager with the Department of Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health Branch. And I'm delighted to be back in the community that we love, and my family's delighted to return back here.
Great.
Hi. Cheyenne Hogan, as Heather had mentioned, I've been here about 14 years with the county and progressed up through varying positions here within mental health and our former substance use disorder program and now our behavioral health program. And so I'm just excited to continue to work on our integration. I'm really excited to have Chris back. Formerly, Chris and I were together in the department. And we were kind of our lead team members here of getting us onto an electronic health record. And so I just look forward to our new projects and accomplishments for our department.
Great. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Kylie, public comment?
Yes, give me one moment. Linda, you are on. Looks like your side is muted.
Oh, God. Can you hear me now?
Go ahead.
Okay. You can hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, oh, okay. So, um, you know, supervisors, um, I understand the seriousness of this disease of the COVID. However, um, and I understand the governor putting on, putting his on lockdown again, except for Delmar County. But, um, and I see that we were able to keep gyms open. But, um, and I see that we were able to keep the gyms open. In most essential businesses, but you kind of caboshed the restaurants again and the bars. And. We really need to think about that. You know, if you can work out in a gym, you can certainly sit in a restaurant without any exertion. And without spreading COVID. Sorry. Secondly, i- in regards to this tax thing, I hope you guys didn't pay money to somebody. That. Gave you the idea that we're gonna vote for that tax. This is the worst year to vote for it to us. And trying to tax the death out of the people. When we're already gonna be suffering from, from this COVID mess, it's just not gonna happen. But, you know, I guess you all trying the best you can. Other than that, have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a great day as well. Anything else?
Chair, I'm just gonna give it a couple more seconds.
Okay.
Okay, I'm.
And yes, we have somebody else. Julia? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, everybody. Um, thank you for letting me speak today. I am joining you today as a concerned citizen and as some of you know very well, someone who was born and raised in Delmar County. While I'm not currently a resident of Delmar County, I have strong ties to this community with many friends and family still living in the area. I've returned to this community that I consider home several times each year to visit with loved ones, support local businesses. And enjoy the natural beauty of the Wild Rivers Coast. When I did live in this community, I gave my whole heart and soul to it, as I know many people in this area continue to do. And it is the love for my home that compels me to speak out now. I have been following the troublesome posts on Roger Gitlin's Facebook page for some time. Where he advocates for people to ignore social distancing guidelines, support businesses that defy state and tribal orders. And even goes so far as to suggest that Sutter Coast Hospital is intentionally misdiagnosing patients with COVID nineteen for financial gain. He has been actively encouraging people on his platform to endanger their fellow community members. By spreading misinformation about the effectiveness of masks, as well as recommending that his followers carry fake mask exemption cards. This rhetoric alone should be enough to render him ineligible to hold public office, but this week Roger took it one step further. He reposted the written version of a speech that some people have credited to Franklin Graham. An evangelist who supports conversion therapy and has been publicly criticized by the NAACP. In his post, Roger declares Franklin's every word speaks for him. This post, which I included in my original email to the board, is obviously racist, homophobic and discriminatory in almost every other sense. Roger makes it very clear in this post that he only intends to represent the interests of the white, straight Christians in his district. No exceptions. He has no consideration for the wonderful diversity that makes Delmar County so special. Including its tribal communities, Latinx communities, Monge communities, among others. He has no regard for the potential harm he is inciting towards the communities referenced in this post. And he continues to tolerate comments on his page making fun of and promoting harm against members of the LGBTQ community. This is absolutely unacceptable behavior from an elected district supervisor. Who is called to represent all of his constituents equitably and who is currently financially supported by Delmar County taxpayers. As elected officials, you have an obligation and a responsibility to condemn Roger's rhetoric at the very least. Roger and his hyperbole will likely contribute to longstanding mistrust in the board by those that feel targeted by his comments. His discourse only serves to polarize the people who live in and visit this community. This will undoubtedly drive residents and tourists away from Delmar County at a time when this community needs their support more than ever. I've been so impressed to see Delmar County rise in ways that I never imagined. And I would need to see that.
Three minutes, would you please wrap it up?
Yep, last sentence. So I have been so impressed to see Delmar County rise in ways that I never imagined. And I would hate to see that momentum hindered due to the inflammatory language of an elected official. I urge you all to take swift action to censure Roger and his hate speech. And make it clear that you stand with and support all residents of Delmar County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Kylie?
I am not seeing any at this time.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment period. And we're gonna move on to a presentation by Dr. Raywell. Our Delmar County Public Health Officer. Dr. Raywell, please give us an update.
Thank you, Jerry. I gotta turn my video on here. There we go. Now we're in business. Uh, trying to hit the high points, I guess. Everyone, I'm sure, has been following worldwide and national trends. You know, thirteen million confirmed cases worldwide, over five hundred thousand deaths. Three point three million, I think, in this country and a hundred and thirty-five thousand or more as of yesterday. The state has definitely seen some very worrisome trends down south. The case averages are climbing very steadily. ICU admissions are increasing. There are some counties that have been kind of on diversion, handing out cases. Over the last four weeks, other counties having transfers. Because their hospitals are at capacity and they can't handle anymore. I think, you know, all those trends are not favorable for the state as a whole. I think that's definitely what triggered. The announcement yesterday from the governor's office about some further restrictions, especially the counties that are being monitored. That list has grown over the last two weeks. Of the counties that don't meet the, the metrics for, for being considered to be, you know, a safe working environment. Considering the nature of the virus and the activity in that county. We're still not on that list. We actually have been on that list very briefly. In the very early rollout, the very first week that they rolled out this program back last month. As a result of being, kind of recovering from our outbreak in May. But we haven't been on that list since then. And really, I don't think there's any danger of it at the moment. But nonetheless, the governor posted some, some changes that do affect all the counties. For us, it's gonna mainly mean that the theater is gonna have to. Probably close down. I mean, technically, the, the rule says that you can't have indoor operations, but I can't imagine them doing anything outside. And of course, restaurants are, are going to be outdoor dining only for, for the time being, based under this new order. And bars as bars will not be able to open. You know, they were still unscheduled to open later this month. I think that we were about a week and a half away. Before they could start resuming operations. And now that's gonna be put on hell hold again. I don't know how long this lasts. I don't think anybody does. I think, you know, it's driven by deep concern about what's happening elsewhere in the state. Not sure really reflects what's happening here. You know, so far, our track record has been better than we expected. I, I'm kind of surprised and it always is a little unnerving when we see numbers that are, are pretty steady. We had one other case show up this last week. But most of this last weekend and the last week has been pretty good. We still have a majority of our case total is actually cases that were discovered during case investigation and contact tracing, which is a good number. That's a good metric to have. You know, we had two cases in the hospital since I think I last reported to you folks and, and both recovered and went home. We haven't really had any management issues at the hospital in terms of volume, obviously, because two cases is, is fairly routine for them. Two cases of any kind of illness. So we're in a good position. I think most of the counties in Northern California are similarly situated. There are some that have. A little bit deeper caseload and more concerns about hospital care, but you know, our nearest neighbors, I think we're all kind of in the same boat at the moment. So it's unfortunate that, that this is taken on kind of a one size fits all. Situation again. At least this portion of restricting what we can do in our county. But, you know, we also have some things that we haven't really measured yet. We haven't measured the impact of the Fourth of July. We know there was a lot of transit in and out of the community. Hasn't, hasn't had a incubation time long enough to measure that effect yet. We need to be watchful. I, you know, I think we need to. Implement the order and hope that it'll be rescinded soon and watch our local numbers and see what changes and what develops. The biggest issue that's gonna affect, could potentially affect us, it's certainly affected other counties. Is the demand for testing. And it's not the test sites per se. The test sites are up and running and California is actually doing over a hundred thousand tests a day altogether. And, you know, about a third of that is from these mobile sites and, and local sites that we're familiar with, like the Verily site at the high school. The problem is the demand for processing is nationwide and worldwide, really. But certainly nationwide. And because there's so much activity going on in Texas and Florida and other parts of the South and in Arizona. The demand has just outpaced the supply. So, you know, California has done some, some kind of unique things. We have a lot of labs in, in the state that can do this kind of testing, you know. So they're, they're doing some steps to re-divert some of the volume of the testing to some of these other labs. Trying to get the, the flow of testing results back more in a normal framework. But, you know, we had a group of tests that came in last week that were twelve days old. I mean, it, it's kind of ridiculous. I've been told that the la- the tests that were actually done last week, some people got their results in three days, which is encouraging to hear. So, you know, maybe we're gonna see a better pattern emerge over the next couple of weeks. But that's really what's driving a lot of the problems around the state is if you can't get results back. Then you can't investigate cases in a timely way and the chance to actually impact those cases is lost. And that's kind of where, where California and much, much of the rest of the country is right now. See, we're, we're kind of impacted by the fact that we can't do the contact tracing that we really need to do to, to mitigate the spread. So we're still doing that here. We're still able to. I hope we can preserve that because I think it's helped prevent the spread of the virus in our community. And I think it's kept us in a good position. And I think that's pretty much all I wanted to say. I, I did want to make one comment about BioBots. I know someone's gonna ask about it. Our last BioBot data was from the end of June and it did show a big surge in activity. We are not, still not sure how to interpret BioBot data. It is very, very new technology. I'm really, really interested to see what our latest test is gonna show. And that was collected over this last weekend. So hopefully we'll have some results by the end of the week. The BioBot data seems to proceed reporting in the community. But so far, the data from the twenty-eighth hasn't really panned out very well in terms of. An expected surge in cases that we would have seen first part of July. So I'm not sure if it's a fluke. Like I said, I really want to see the next report and see what that tells us. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Doctor. Or members?
Yes, doctor, how much leeway do you have to deviate from the governor's orders? Are these suggestions or absolute mandatory?
I don't consider them suggestions. Whenever the, the governor comes out with an order that's linked to a CDPH. Statement, we consider that to be kind of a joint order. I would prefer clearer language. I think I know where you're going with this. I think the announcement did not have very clear language. It was kind of confusing for me to read and I knew the announcement was coming out. I was given at least advance notice of one day. So I would prefer clearer language, but we don't have any leeway to not enforce it. All we can do is if we think the need is present in our community, we can make it stricter. I can, I can do a local order that's more stringent. I just can't ignore a, a state order like that. It's, it's, we're legally bound to enforce it.
Doctor Raywell, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I sure can.
Thank you. I'd just like to go over the current numbers because I think the last update was from yesterday morning about ten thirty. So there were sixty-one inactive cases. There are no active cases. Nobody's hospitalized. And of course, we have no deaths. And Pelican Bay has a similar successful story. No inmate has ever been infected with the COVID virus at Pelican Bay State Prison. And then, of course, two corrections officers had the infection and it's since recovered. Is this information still accurate? And can you update it at all? That'd be my first of two questions.
That's accurate and there's really no update to that summary. That's pretty, pretty much the status quo right now.
So my second question has to do with the latest government's executive or governor's executive order. And there's some confusion about restaurants that it's all takeout. Is outside dining permitted? At restaurants with appropriate social distancing permitted under the governor's statewide. Executive order?
Yes, it is. The only thing changed was indoor dining for restaurants. So that will not be permitted, at least on a temporary basis, but outdoor dining is still permitted.
And as an adjunct to that question, regarding the, some of tribal entities have introduced music as part of their entertainment. That's currently still not permitted under your jurisdiction to allow music at these restaurants. Is that correct?
That's, that is also true, yes.
You anticipate a change?
You know, I've been posing a question about musicians. I've, I've, I've asked the state probably four times total in the last month on different occasions. The answer never seems to change. I, I think it's probably a low priority item on their list of things to do, which is, you know, extremely long. They've got a lot going on all the time. I'm gonna keep asking the question. I think there should be a distinction made. Personally, I think there should be a distinction made between a, you know, a solo musician or, you know, a small group, a duo or something like that. Compared to a full-size orchestra or a, you know, a professional choir. I mean, they're, they're different venues, they're different. I mean, everything's different about it. There should be a distinction. I just don't think the state has, has come to that conclusion or been, had the time to really look at it. But that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Doctor, I was hoping you could back, back up to the BioBot piece. There's a lot of head scratching, especially around that terminology, what it means. Can you break it down to simple terms? Because obviously it has to do with the collection of sampling at the city's wastewater facility. And then some of the numbers that have been expressed in the couple thousand range. Could you help add some clarity to that? And what exactly does that mean with that DNA sampling?
Yeah, it's RNA sampling. So BioBot is the name of the company that does this. So we've just kind of latched on to that term to refer to it because it's easy to remember. But it's, the system is, is using samples collected from wastewater to detect RNA. That is in the wastewater that is produced from people who are, you know, pooping and peeing into the system. It's really pretty simple. And the thought is that by blending all that water and sampling it at the right point, you can get a, a pretty good estimate of. How many human cases of disease were actually producing that level of RNA that you tested for. Like I said, it's new technology. It's not been very well studied. We're, a lot of people are very intrigued by it and it's being used around the world in a lot of different places. Because if it is, if it does have some predictive value, it would help us gear up a little bit for potential outbreaks. The problem is we don't, we do know that people can produce virus, virus material for a long time after they're infectious. And I have a personal suspicion based on what I understand of the science, that that is gonna confound reports from time to time. Because it'll be more shedding a virus into the system from people who are recovering than, than. And that doesn't really reflect on what's active at the time. So it's, we're, we're still learning about this tool. You know, I don't know if we're gonna do this forever, but. So far, we're, we've seen some results that have been a little bit helpful, more than a little bit helpful, actually. And I think we just need to be patient and see how this plays out and, and follow our report. We can see a pattern here that's useful to us.
So if you could, then please specify what the data may have tell, told us as far as the numbers. Based on the RNA sample size and then the number of population that system collects for.
So the numbers, they, they do a reproducible count of RNA material. And then they project based on the, the size of the system and the size of the population, what that reflects in terms of case counts. So it's a, it's a mathematical calculation that's done at the lab. We don't have anything to do with that. That's, that's part of their reporting to us. It's done at the wastewater treatment plant that roughly samples. It's done at the wastewater treatment plant that roughly samples about 60% of Delmore County. And the reasons we decided to do this is because there are very few counties that are situated in a way that they can sample that many people in the county with one test. And get some useful information. So we're really looking at over half the county when we're doing this task. And I think the interesting thing is we've had a couple of reports that came out as zero. Which kind of reflects what we were suspicious of is that sometimes we have so little disease activity going on that essentially it drops off to nothing and that we're not getting transmission. Clearly, that's not the case with the last one. I don't expect that to be the case with this one. But it kind of reflects the fact that, you know, we're really on the edge of the epidemic and we have been for months. We've been, been pretty lucky really, just because of our location and our population density and the fact that most of California shut down before the virus really became very widespread throughout the state. That's not the case now. It's widespread and it's everywhere. It's just that in small counties like ours, we're still, you know, we're still blessed with a low transmission rate and that's helped us quite a lot. It's just this, this tool might be able to give us a little bit of advanced warning if something's about to change and that's what we're hoping for.
Okay. You just seemed reluctant to give me a number, which would suggest a certain population of people that could have had this at one point in time and that would certainly help to add clarity because those are the questions I'm getting. I mean, are we talking a couple hundred? Are we talking a couple thousand? You say 60% of the population, you know, we're, that's close to 17,000 people or just shy of. So what is the number?
I would say, i- if you're asking for how many people have been infected, which is where I think you're going with this. I, I think based on the data from, from this particular test and also our clinical data and what we can kind of extrapolate from that, I would go anywhere from 200 to 600 who've been exposed and recovered at this point.
Thank you.
That's just an armchair estimate. Yeah, it might be accurate, might not.
That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kylie, is there any public comment on this presentation?
I didn't have any written particular to this presentation, but I'm just going to give it a couple of seconds for the public who are participating to raise their hand if they want to speak. Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you again, Dr. Ray Walt. Appreciate all your hard work and, and the report, the update.
Thank you all.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Sean Freeze from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, which, who is going to give us an update on the elk hoof disease. Sean?
Yeah, good morning supervisors. Good morning, everyone from Delmar County. So my name's Sean Freeze. I'm the Lands and Wildlife Program Supervisor for Mendocino, Humboldt and Delmore Counties. On the meeting, we also have two of our wildlife veterinarians, Emma Lance and Brandon Monk. We also have our elk research biologist on the meeting. That's Elk Carrington-Hilson. And we also have our elk and pronghorn statewide coordinator, Kristin Denrider. So we're going to start off the presentation with our wildlife veterinarians leading it off with Emma Lance and then we'll move through the presentation. So Emma, you can share your screen. We can start this presentation.
Hi there. Yeah, we'll go ahead. Give me a shout if you have difficulties hearing me or if you can't see my screen when I start.
We hear you.
All right. How are we doing on the? Excellent. All right. Well, like Sean said, my name is Emma Lance. I'm one of the wildlife veterinarians for California Department of Fish and Wildlife and we'll talk a little bit about this elk hoof disease. It's also called treponema-associated hoof disease. So as Sean mentioned, this is the staff that we have on the call today. So Kristin Dunreider, Sean Carrington-Hilson, Brandon Monk, one of the other veterinarians for the department and myself. So treponema-associated hoof disease is a disease of elk. It's also called TAD. So I'll refer to it as TAD for the remainder of the presentation. Treponema is a genus of spirochetes bacteria. So like you can see in the upper right corner, just a spiral type bacteria. Some of which can cause disease in animals and humans and some of which not. Treponemes, up to 80 strains of treponemes are associated with a disease called digital dermatitis in livestock. Also known as hairy heel wart or strawberry foot rot. And this has been known since the 1970s and while it's a similar disease, it doesn't, we don't have any evidence that it's the same process. TAD in, in elk is also called this elk hoof disease. And as you can see in the lower picture on the side there, it can, it can get to be a pretty severe and debilitating disease in these individuals. TAD is multifactorial, which makes it difficult to study, which makes it difficult to understand in a lot of ways. The agent components, we're, we're unclear of the role of treponema specifically. As there's often a lot of other bacteria species that are found in association in these diseased hooves. As far as the individual goes, there can be genetic components, immune function of an elk defects in the skin in the right place that can affect whether they get the disease or not. And then population levels, this, this may be a disease that's increased, increased density of individuals, especially if increased density of elk results in stress, greater stress on those individuals. And then treponemes are likely widespread in the environment. So that also plays a role in, in the development of disease. As far as TAD goes, a lot is unknown about this. It is, it was only first suspected in elk in the 1990s and first really investigated in about 2007, 2009. So we're still getting an understanding of, of how this plays out on the landscape. And diagnosis of, of TAD is postmortem. So we have to have dead animals in order to sample for treponema-associated hoof disease. We can look for lameness and limping when animals are alive, but there are a lot of other disease processes and injuries that can cause lameness. And the treponemes are pretty difficult to identify as far as bacteria go. So TAD in California, we had confirmation of TAD in early April of this year on hooves that had been taken in December and then January. So specifically in, in U County, there were two hunter harvests in December and then one clinical animal that was observed euthanized and then necropsyied in January of this year. The important point about this is that the collection and diagnostics for these, this disease take a lot of time. The, the samples get sent off to a research group. There's really slow turnaround. There's, there's, they can take months to, we can take months to process these samples, especially like I said, given that the treponemes can be difficult to identify. Just a few examples of the disease that we do see. This, you can, you can see the hoof lesion with a sloughed hoof on one claw. It's fairly typical of, of advanced TAD. And the next one, we have this club foot here. So that, again, typical of severe disease. But some of these are more subtle. So you can see the, the crusting at the heel base. And then on the right here, this inter-digital thickening. Those, those are characteristic of earlier subclinical lesions that may not be noticeable in terms of clinical signs like lameness, but may progress to something more severe. Again, this is an example of a, a subclinical lesion that's, that can be a lot more difficult to identify. Especially on the, the photo on the left where there's a lot more fur that the fur hasn't been, the hair hasn't been shaved away in order to better visualize it. And as we do more surveillance, looking for, for this disease in animals, the researchers, hunters, we're going to have to be very careful about how we look at these hooves and determine whether or not they're, they're ones that we need to be concerned about TAD and and it's a chronic disease and, and sometimes you get these subclinical findings and they may stay at that level, but oftentimes they will progress to worse lesions. This is not a disease that we understand these animals ever clear. So TAD distribution is first described in elk, he said, and then in 2007, 2009 in Washington here and following increased reports of lameness from the mid 1990s. And then since then, it's spread Oregon, Idaho, and now California. These yellow yellow crosses are detections we've seen in new locations within the last year. With that, I'll turn it over to Sean.
Yeah, so I'm going to bring, I'm going to build on what the department is doing on the ground in Delmore and Humboldt Counties. And we're going to talk about surveillance and our management. So the first thing we're going to look at is hunter harvest sampling. To diagnose samples, we have to have, as Emma said, dead animals on the ground so we can do our, our sampling. So CDFW, our, our Northern Region staff will be conducting hunter harvest surveillance from elk harvested in Delmore and Humboldt Counties. So this will include harvested elk with general draw, the share program, NPLM tags through the use of hunter check stations and hunter submissions. So we're hoping we get 100% success rate from all of our hunters and full cooperation would mean that we would collect approximately 126 samples of harvested elk during this 2020 season. So hunters have been requested to bring the head, liver and all four legs intact to either the department office in Eureka or our check station that will be manning during the hunting season, throughout the hunting season at Lake Earl. So we'll, we'll gather samples, submit them to our investigation labs and also send them to the California Animal Health and Food Safety Lab for testing at Davis. And we will be testing for TAD as well as other diseases. The next thing we're going to be looking at is opportunistic sampling. So all reports of dead elk will be taken advantage of to obtain opportunistic samples for elk hoof disease. Sources could include incidents of predation, vehicle lesions, poaching, any other reports of dead elk that we get. We're going to have staff on the ground for those collections. So research and monitoring efforts within the northwestern hut zone began in 2016 to determine cause-specific mortality and prevalence of disease. This has been accomplished through necropsies of dead elk and through serologic testing of elk captured for calling efforts. In addition to that, all known mortalities have been documented even when necropsies of the carcass were not feasible. So to date, we have 120 mortalities that have been investigated and 63 necropsies have been performed to determine cause of death. 56 of those mortalities occurred in marked and unmarked calf elk. And samples from 50 necropsies have been examined by histology and other means of diagnostic evaluation at UC Davis Animal Health and Food Safety Lab. So targeted surveillance, what is that? Well, in 2019, collection of hoof samples began to obtain normal samples for research being conducted currently by Dr. Margaret Wild at Washington State University. The samples were collected from five adult elk and sent to Washington Animal Disease Diagnostic Laboratory for testing in February 2020. And after the first confirmed case of elk hoof disease, Northern Region began documenting the occurrence of any elk that were limping, were less than ideal body condition, so they were thin or emaciated, or had evidence of diarrhea and had visible abnormal hoof growth. So focused surveillance through, through regular visual observations will continue to occur on the affected herd, adjacent herds and other resident herds on wet substrates with significant livestock overlap in Delmore and Humboldt Counties. So targeted surveillance will occur on estimated range of one to 20 individuals. Elk with obvious hoof abnormalities or that are severely sick will be euthanized via gunshot. If elk hoof disease is suspected due to severe lameness, but visual confirmation of hoof abnormalities cannot be made, elk will be immobilized to determine the extent of hoof lesions. Immobilize, immobilization of elk will be accomplished through free-range darting with immobilization drugs, immobilization drugs. Elk may be subsequently euthanized after visual inspection of the hooves so we can take samples. And then full necropsies will be performed on deceased elk to rule out other diseases or comorbidities. So can you go to the next slide, Emma? And right here, we have a, some of our tools or other tools is observations. So we do have a online portal for anyone to click on and count elk for us and submit that to our online data. So we do use that data in our counts. And we have different levels of, of surveillance. So we have a statewide TAD surveillance plan that's been adopted. And you know, we're looking at our elk management unit here in the Northwest Plan, which includes all those surveillance topics I just touched on, which is hunter harvest opportunistic and target sampling. And we also have the ability to change hunting pressure on the individual herds within our hut zone. So if we feel the need to do that, we can do that. Can you go to the next slide, Emma? So management. Really the only management tool we have at this point is lethal removal and that's by two means. We have regulated hunter, hunter harvest. We also had targeted removal of sick animals. The lethal removal is the only management tool that has been employed for this disease. When used to target sick animals, we also have to look at animal welfare. So what does that do? That removes potentially infectious individuals from the population, decreasing disease prevalence and potentially decreasing transmission within the, within and between herds. It also can potentially enhance animal welfare by removing severely affected elk. They're likely to die from starvation, disease or predation. Can also decrease population density, which if the disease is density dependent or the population is over nutritional carrying capacity, this will also decrease transmission. Can also decrease the amount of potentially infectious materials that are on the landscape by potentially decreasing environmental contamination, which is thought to be a likely risk factor in developing this disease. It also provides for surveillance and data for epidemiological analysis, which is really critically important for us to have. So we need to have these samples so we can get a better understanding of this disease in our landscape. And that's our quick presentation. And I would really like to thank you guys, everyone, for attending the presentation. We have a great team of dedicated wildlife biologists and veterinarians that are partnering with the general public, our hunters, universities, federal and state agencies, and also Washington State so we can better understand this disease and manage our herds. So we can take questions if anyone has them.
Okay, Sean, are there any questions from supervisors?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sean, can you hear me okay? Supervisor Getlin?
I do hear you.
Thank you. You know, I received a very detailed letter from constituent Phoebe Lenhart, who she has attempted to contact you with regarding some of her concerns. Have you, or do you have knowledge of what she has stated in her communications with your department?
Yeah, we do. We, we, we've talked to Phoebe quite a bit. We've, you know, provided answers. Pretty detailed answers to the best of our ability.
Okay, so let me just follow up on one of the points in there and one of the points you made that you anticipate 120 euthanizations in Delmore County. Did I hear that correctly? 120 in Delmore County?
Supervisor, that was, that was for, just for our hunter harvest. So if we have full cooperation of all of our hunters that have tags in the northwestern zone, which we hope to have, well, that'll give us 126 samples.
So now in Delmore County, can you anticipate a number of, of this treponema-associated hoof disease euthanizations? Can you anticipate how many? And I'm going to guess the last number I heard is there are approximately 1,500 elk on a latest census population or Delmore County. Are those numbers up to date and accurate?
That's our, that's our minimum count. So that's the minimum amount of elk that we have in Delmore County.
So are you in, how, how do you, do you anticipate euthanizations in Delmore County to be what number in Delmore?
Well, I couldn't tell you exactly, but if we get, assuming we get 100% hunter harvest cooperation, that's, we'll have 126 samples from that. But our targeted surveillance, basically what we're going to do is look for those symptomatic animals. samples from that. But our targeted surveillance, basically what we're going to do is look for those symptomatic animals and sample those. So really, there's, there's some work that needs to be done. Right now, we, I think we've, we have a herd of approximately thirty that we have symptomatic signs in. So given the restraints, reason why we're all not in front of each other and on, online here, we do have some operational constraints for COVID nineteen. I mean, we can't have staff fully out in the field to do what we really think needs to be done. So we're going to have to kind of slowly chip away at this while maintaining safety guidelines.
Okay, Sean, and there's a question at the bottom of this pile here, and this is what I was going to ask. Do you anticipate the curtailing of any permits, hundred permits in, in Del Norte County and cutting back because of of the ongoing euthanizations? Do you anticipate cutting back as Ms. Lenhart is contending? Do you see that happening with Department of Fish and Wildlife in Del Norte County?
So can you clarify your question? Are we going to eliminate hunting or stop hunting?
Or curtailing the permits? Yes.
Not this year.
Okay, good. I just wanted to get the clarification on that, and thank you very much for your very useful and helpful information.
Any other supervisors have some questions or comments?
Yes, Sean, thanks for coming today along with staff and the presentations added by the veterinarians. I want to, I want to clarify, I've, I've been in conversation with Tom Wheeler with Environmental Protection Information Center. Eureka, it's my understanding that he submitted a petition to the California Fish and Game Commission to react to this year's hunting season. I think you just clarified that for us. I want to go back to management of it and just make sure I'm understanding you very clearly. The currently, the only known management tool to probably eliminate the disease from the environment, that tool is, by my understanding, is, is basically the calling of these animals. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, Brandon or Emma, would you guys like to build off that so we can?
Sure. Yeah, so as far as eliminating from the environment, that is something that's unclear right now. A lot of what we understand about this disease or what, what what we can learn about treponine disease in ruminants, so domestic livestock and elk for the most part. And is this is a, this is a disease that is very difficult to eliminate or eradicate once it's present. With digital dermatitis in, in livestock, that is, you know, if it's, it's most commonly found on dairies. But if it's found on a dairy, it's, it's usually just an issue of managing the disease. So trying to make, help active lesions revert to non-active lesions and try to stop lesions from progressing to the severity that you see in the elk here. And so, given that we have more serious constraints on the, on the wildlife side of things in terms of treatment options and our management options. And yeah, the, the, the only real option we have is lethal removal. And because we don't have a great understanding of the disease, in general, it's, it's going to take some time to see what the effects are of the lethal removal. And that's one of the other reasons that, you know, animal welfare is also a priority for us because of the, the severity of the this disease and how it does it affect their ability to, their ability to graze, their ability to escape.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Lance. Also, if you could expand on some of the constituent concerns and, and go back to the discussion around livestock and the transmissibility of this disease to livestock. Could you guys, either Dr. Monk or Dr. Lance, expand on that?
Yeah, so we know that there are treponine-associated diseases in livestock, so in cattle. But there are, there, there's no evidence of transmissibility between species. So between elk and cattle or elk and elk. And that is definitely something that we are interested in exploring, especially with our other agency and organization partners. Just because this is a regional issue between Washington and Oregon and Idaho and us. I mean, Washington's been dealing with it for a while now, so trying to learn from things that they have, have discovered is definitely one of our goals.
And it's been seen only in Roosevelt populations at this time and not Tulley or Rocky?
Not Tulley.
And then how did they get here?
That's a really hard question to answer. You know, the, the fact that you do see elk populations, new infections coming from the north, that's, you know, that's circumstantial evidence. But, you know, it, it certainly can be spread across the landscape potentially. That's, these are all good questions and ones that we do hope to be able to answer at some point. But yeah, unfortunately, with such a new disease and such a complex one, but these, these are things that will take us some time to try to work out.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other supervisors have comments or questions? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Then Kylie, you want to read that public comment?
This public comment is from Phoebe Lenhart. Treponine, treponine-associated hoof disease TAD appeared in Washington in the nineteen nineties. This devastating disease has no cure and ultimately results in the death of the infected Roosevelt elk. In Washington, TAD spread relentlessly southward. In twenty fourteen, TAD was confirmed in herds of Roosevelt elk in Oregon. TAD continued to spread quickly southerly and arrived in Del Norte County infecting Roosevelt elk in twenty nineteen. The California Department of Fish and Game knew that there were TAD-infected Roosevelt elk in Del Norte County when they petitioned the California Fish and Game Commission for large increases in hunting tags Roosevelt elk for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one hunting season. Despite meeting with the FGC five times twenty twenty, it appears that the DFW deliberately deceived the FGC by withholding information about the TAD infection in the Roosevelt elk until after the FGC approved the DFW's request for additional hunting tags. The FGC was ignorant of this crucial TAD information. It wasn't until May seventh, twenty twenty, when the public learned of the arrival of the fatal TAD to elk in Del Norte County. Please stop the spread of TAD by appealing to the FGC to prohibit the hunting of Roosevelt elk in Del Norte County immediately. It is imperative to stop hunting now because hunters can spread the TAD on the soles of their boots and by the tires on their vehicles. And in parentheses, it says Washington State University. The DFW does not know how or where the, the Roosevelt elk became infected with a TAD. The DFW is putting the health of all our local herds and all the elk in California, Rocky Mount and Tulley in irreversible jeopardy. The DFW's approach toward the TAD infection is by conducting surveillance. You should know that surveillance did not stop the spread of TAD in Washington and Oregon. TAD disseminates elk herds everywhere it spreads. One theory about the spread of the TAD to Roosevelt elk proposes that elk come into contact with the treponines bacteria, the digital dermatitis found in domestic livestock and cattle from Washington State University. The DFW has not stated that there are no treponines diseases in farms in Del Norte County, for example, the Alexander, the Alexander family ecodairy, excuse me. A second theory about the infection with TAD in Roosevelt elk is due to their exposure to toxic chemicals used in commercial lumbering. A herbicide atrazine is believed to weaken immune systems of elk, and they're unable to resist bacteria and diseases. Atrazine was banned by the European Union in two thousand and four. Many chemicals like glyphosate, an active ingredient in Roundup, are suspect. Herbicides destroy unwanted vegetation and that is part of the elk's diet and can reduce plant species by seventy percent. The DFW has not reported that there are no toxic chemicals used by lumbering companies, for example, the Green Diamond Resource Company. Please petition the FGC to ban hunting in Del Norte County until the DFW locates the source of the TAD contamination. Drones are available to track the location Roosevelt elk herds to the cause of TAD exposure. Roosevelt elk herds graze in predictable patterns, completing their route about every two weeks, and advocate for the DFW to conduct due diligence by investigating and stopping the spread of the lethal TAD. Up to ninety percent of the elk in herds in Washington are affected by the TAD. Entire herds of California elk and the potential for extinction are at risk. Does the DFW want to repeat the disastrous outcomes that exist in Washington, Oregon by depending upon surveillance of TAD infection in Roosevelt elk in Del Norte County? Your consideration and your action will be appreciated. That was my written part a little bit.
Is there any, is there any other public comment?
I'm going to give it just a second online. And Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you, Sean and group for the presentation. We appreciate all the information. Although I'm not sure it was appropriate just before lunch, but thank you anyway. We appreciate it. Very informative. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, supervisors. Be in touch. If anyone has any questions, you can contact me directly.
We'll do it. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Three at a time.
Okay, so we're done with presentations. We're going to move, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Pulling item number ten for discussion later, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also pull item number eleven for additional discussion.
Okay, we'll pull item number eleven for future discussion.
Move to approve items number one through twelve minus numbers ten through eleven.
Chairman?
Second. Go ahead.
I believe that Director Snow may have one item she wants to pull also.
Okay.
Yes, hi. I need to remove item number nine. This actually just is no longer needed. We were amending a budget to increase it at this facility in anticipation of surpassing what we had budgeted amount not to exceed. Fortunately, that's not going to be necessary, so we can remove number nine. Thank you.
We're going to. Chairman, I would amend my motion to reflect approval for items number one through eight and item number twelve at this time.
Thank you.
I will second that.
We're both in a second. Kylie, any public comment? You're on mute if you're talking.
Sorry, yes, I haven't written. It's on item number ten and item number eleven, and they're from Norm Williams.
Let's wait, let's wait until we bring those items up.
Okay.
We've pulled those items, so let's wait. Are there any public comments on the items that are in the motion?
I'm just going to give it a couple more seconds. And I'm not seeing any.
Okay, so if there's no further discussions or comments, Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to item number sixteen, which is to approve the Assistant County Council position to start at range one, step C, effective the date of hire as requested by county council. Looking for a motion.
Make the motion.
I have two motions. Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Cowan, seconded by Supervisor Howard. Is there any public comment on this item, Kylie?
I don't have any written. I'll give it a couple seconds online. And Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, any further comments or questions from board members? Kylie, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Now we'll move on to item number seventeen, discuss and give possible direction to staff regarding the contents of the sales and use tax ordinance to be placed on the November ballot, including the citizen oversight provision. Joel, is this something you were going to talk to?
Yes, yes, it is. So the board has, has previously given direction to place a one percent sales tax in the unincorporated area of the county on the ballot. And so that resolution doing so will come forward at the next board meeting. This is one final opportunity to discuss details if the board so desires. The one thing that I am asking for direction on is the city attorney Martha Rice and I have been going back and forth to make the ordinances as similar as possible. And so the ballot question contains the promise of a citizen oversight committee without any more detail. So what the city is going to be doing, hopefully, and they have a meeting later today, but as far as I know, right now, the city will be doing a seven-member oversight committee, with five public members plus the city manager and the financial manager. As a counterpart to that, what I'm proposing is five public members in the unincorporated area of the county plus the CAO and the auditor or their designee as non-voting members. And this would be a two-year term. And they would look at the use of the funds and make a public report. And then later on, the board can create by resolution, maybe specific bylaws or something for this. But it would necessarily be a Brown Act body. So we're talking about a public body that require a little staffing, have two staff members on it, non-voting. And this would be almost identical to the cities except the titles of the staff members. And then the other thing the ballot question requires is audits of the funds, and those will be covered in our independent audit already and, and can be pointed out there. So really what I'm asking for is the supervisor's blessing on that plan or any changes that you'd like to propose.
Has anybody got any changes or any issues with Joel's suggestions?
Joel, I'd like to ask you a question. If you can please clarify the purpose of the oversight committee. Is this simply to, if the ballot measure is on the ballot and passes, then is the only function of the oversight committee to disperse funds? Or is there another function or functions that the oversight committee is, is going to engage in?
As a general tax, the only body that can disperse the funds would be the Board of Supervisors, unless, you know, specifically budgeted. So we're not talking about a body that has control over the funds, just a body that has, it's like a, an accountability function. They're going to look at the use in a public session and report on the use and to help the public understand where the money's going. They're not going to exercise actual control over that money.
And the follow-up question on this, if the board agrees on our next meeting, this is a one percent general sales tax, which will increase our tax rate at the present time to eight point five percent. Do you have any information on how much monies could possibly be collected during the next fiscal period of time?
I would ask Jay, I don't have off the top of my head the projections on those.
I believe the, a projection at this time would be roughly one point two million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any concerns? Do you need a motion, Joel, or just consensus?
Yeah, I, I just take, you know, the lack of disagreement as consensus.
Yeah, I think you should move forward. Sounds, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number eighteen, a budget transfer oh, six, eleven, and the amount of thirty-five thousand from the general, general fund contingency budget to the public defender budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Oh, you know, cut, well, I guess it's just consensus, so there's no, yeah. I have a motion and a second. Any public comment, Kylie, on the budget transfer?
Just going to give it a couple more seconds. And Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, would you please pull a vote then?
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to legislative budget issues, item number nineteen. Proven authorized purchase of a Verisite Pro Plus Pipeline Video Inspection System amount not to exceed twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-five. amount not to exceed $12,685 for the County Service Area Number One as requested by the Director of Community Development. For a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Item number 19.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Heidi, did you want to weigh in with something or do you have any information or we're good to go? I don't hear you. It looks like you're on mute, but. Oh, I don't know.
If Heidi's not able to get on there, Chair, I can give you some information on it if you'd like.
Yeah, well, why don't you go ahead and do that, please Chair?
Okay, this, this is, as, as the title said, this is a camera for inspection of lines. Within the CSA, the funding source itself is actually MPG funding along with City of Crescent City and CSA money. You know, the use of the camera would be to investigate and inspect the lines and overall, you know, a positive for the CSA so that we can accurately get in and the city can help maintain those lines.
Great. And there's no public comment Kylie?
Chair, I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Would you please, if there's no other comments or questions from board members, would you please pull those?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number 20, which is to approve and authorize the purchase of one Caterpillar M320F excavator at a price not to exceed $345,000 being purchased by SB1 Funding as requested by the Director of Community Development. Heidi, are you with this yet?
I, I think so. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Yes. What we are asking for today is for authorization to purchase an excavator for our Roads Division. It was included on our SB1 project list that was approved at one of the board meetings back in June. This is a piece of equipment that we need for the day-to-day operations of our division. It will replace a Komatsu excavator that is having issues that are not able to be repaired, which limits the circumstances in which it may be used. Our reason for wanting to purchase the excavator now is one, because we can use it and two, because there's a large lead time. And three, the longer we wait, we know that there's going to be an increase in the price of the equipment, which, you know, it has a fairly large price tag. So even a 2% increase is, you know, it's, it's a lot of money for us. So if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any public comment Kylie?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, thank you. Heidi, did you want to speak to anything on item number 19 or did Jay cover it pretty well?
You know, I didn't even hear what Jay said. I'm sure he did a fantastic job. And you got, you approved it, so he must have done a great job. So thank you. Thank you for doing that and thank Jay for covering for me. Appreciate that.
Okay, thanks. Kylie, would you please pull the vote for item number 20?
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number 21, establish, eliminate, reclassify and/or adjust positions as outlined in the spreadsheet labeled attachment A F Y 20-21. Proposed staffing changes as requested by County Administrator, Administrative Officer Serena. Anything you want to add Jay?
Just an overview, this is, these are non-general fund and grant-funded positions requested by different departments and as such, they don't have an effect on our overall general fund and the deficit that we face at this point. These are, as I mentioned, requests from the department, so they either meet the intent of what the department is doing operationally or are correcting positions so that the operations will be more accurate.
Okay, looking for a motion.
Approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second, Supervisor Cowan. Any comments by board members? Questions? Kylie, any public comment?
I'm gonna give it just a couple more seconds, Chair.
Great.
And I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, would you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go back to the two items that were pulled. Item number 10, a resolution of the Delmar County Board of Supervisors in support of law enforcement and public safety. Are you requesting to have this pulled Supervisor Berkowitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it's highly unusual for a supervisor to withdraw his own motion, but I think this really probably goes over the line for me. When I submitted this resolution, there were one, two, seven whereas clauses. However, when we look at what made it out into the agenda, there are only five whereas clauses. And it looks like some things basically that have been eliminated from this resolution. And my question is, how come the resolution isn't as I submitted it? And hopefully somebody will give me some answers.
Well, I can certainly give you the answers. I, I was, mentioned it as it was requested to be put on at the last board meeting, that I did not want anything controversial and I was not interested in getting into opinion or getting into things that really don't direct the support to the law enforcement and first responder public safety issue. So I don't, and, and if, you know, I put your name on it because I, you had initially requested it. If you're not happy, I can put my name on it and you can withdraw your name. I don't have an issue with that. I'm the one that made the changes and I made the changes because for some reason, there has to be, it appears as though trying to make this divisive and it's not supposed to be that way. It should be a resolution of support and should be on the positive and not on the negative. That's why I changed it. If you don't want your name attached to it, I have no problem putting my name on it.
Sure, I just basically, just like an answer, here was the paragraph or the sentence that was deleted. And I'd like to know if this is controversial. It says, whereas law enforcement is under siege in the United States. Is this controversial?
It certainly is. It's your opinion.
Okay, so anything that's of my opinion here, you would not approve?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying you're trying to take something that is not controversial and make it controversial. You're trying to say that, that the United States law enforcement is under siege. I don't see that in the 3,000 counties of the United States or the 19,000 cities. There's maybe a handful of counties and, and cities that are having issues, but you're trying to put something in there that's not there. You're trying to make this like it's a, an infestation throughout the whole United States. I'm not interested in going there. Like I say, you can withdraw your name, you can withdraw your support. That, that's not an issue with me. I'm gonna keep this resolution positive. And that, that's where I want to see it go. If you want to stay on the negative side of it, that's your, that's your prerogative.
Well, I don't think there's any negative thing here, however, you know, considering I submitted the resolution, my name is on it. If you would rather have your name on it, hey, I would agree to that. I was just concerned that my name was on something that I had not written or spoken.
Okay, so, so we can replace that as requested by Supervisor Berkowitz to Hemmingson? If you want to put that in the record Kylie, if that's, I don't know Joel, is that permissible?
That's fine, but when the motion is made, just say as amended.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, may I be recognized please?
Yep, go ahead.
You know, there's some other issues here that are very concerning to me. Mister Chairman, you are the chairman. It is, you're not the all-stater of this is gonna be in and this is not gonna be out. You put it on the agenda. We are a board of five and we decide what is divisive and not. And I'm very concerned. It isn't just this one paragraph. One of the other paragraphs, which Supervisor Berkowitz and I worked together on developing, has suddenly found itself in, for the most part, in item number 11, which we're going to discuss next. You apparently made that decision to delete this from, apparently it's an okay statement, but you just didn't want it on this particular resolution. And there were some amendments to it having to do with the constitutionality rights of all people. I'm very concerned that what you're doing is you're speaking for the board without taking a board count. So I'm going to make a motion now to reinsert law enforcement is under siege in the United States. I'll ask for a second and also, please everyone, open your eyes and look what's going around this city. We in Crescent City and Delmar County, we do not live in a bubble. And I think it's important that we identify this and defend our law enforcement, that they are in fact under siege. So I will ask for that to be reinserted into the document and ask for a second on that.
I'll second that.
Mister Chairman, I'd make an alternative motion. I see your point. I appreciate you expressing those. I also appreciate Supervisor Gitlin and Supervisor Berkowitz's additions, but at this time, as I mentioned at our last meeting and specifically asked Mister Berkowitz's opinion on, I mean, this is really geared towards our law enforcement, more importantly recognizing their capabilities and their efforts in protecting our citizens here and all that law enforcement community that we support. And if we could keep it to that, which this resolution currently states, that would be my motion. So I would like to make the motion to approve the resolution as it's stated in our agenda.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second and I would just like to, you know, address what Roger said. This is a body of five and it was submitted by a body of one. And I changed it as a body of one. So now you're, now you're saying that you had part in writing that resolution that you're wanting to go back to. I just want to say that you're, you're picking two sides of it. So with that, we'll take up the second motion first and ask for any public comment Kylie?
Yeah, I'm gonna give it just a couple seconds. I do have a written public for number 10 also. And that is for Norma Williams. And it says the Delmar County's Employees Association SEIU 1021 concur with this resolution and agree that we should support all law enforcement officers and first responders, first responders who live and work in Delmar County. We also support the acknowledgement and recognition that there are nationwide systemic issues, systemic issues that need to be addressed, but that it should be done in an open-minded, respectful and collaborative matter that is beneficial to all. And I don't see any public comment online.
Okay, and with that, would you please pull a vote?
Point of order, please, Mister Chairman. I'd like to hear the second motion if we're voting on. I want to make sure I have absolute clarity that this is a motion submitted by Supervisor Howard, which has your name on it, Chairman Hemmingson, as the originator of this document. And then it would be as is, as it appears in the agenda on item number 10. I just want to make sure that is what I heard.
That, for clarity, yes, I will clarify that for Supervisor Gitlin. That is correct.
Okay, I'm gonna start Supervisor Gitlin.
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, now we will move on to item number 11, which is another proclamation in support of equity and accountability. Supervisor Gitlin, you pulled this. You want to speak to this?
I did. First of all, on all of our agenda items, we have, as presented by a particular supervisor, this one does not state the genesis of where this resolution came from. So I'd like to know where this proclamation in support of equality and accountability came from, who wrote it. Certainly, I was not aware of anything on this board discussion. I see no supervisor's name associated, so perhaps you can identify that.
Chair, I would just like to say that it was a clerical issue on my end. I apologize for that. And I believe it came from Health and Human Services. Heather Snow, if you're on, correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Yes, that's correct. I provided it to the board for their consideration.
So Heather, if you can hear me, my, my question has to do with one of the whereses, which originally appeared on the first document, item number 10, which we've already voted on. For reasons that are not clear to me, that was deleted from the item number 10, the law enforcement, and inserted on item number 11, this proclamation in support of equality and accountability. There's a couple little words that you left out, like the constitutional rights of all citizens, which we had in our original 10 document and you put it as number 11. How we refuse to be silent or divided. We refuse to let ignorance and justice and hate prevail. And I know you wrote that, so we agree with that. That's certainly, I'm just curious to know why you eliminated the constitutionally aspect of the exact verbiage that we presented in item number 10. Could you please address that?
I provided a draft to the board on June 23rd. It was prior to, to me seeing any drafts from you. And I believe administration made a final edit on, you know, separating the two so that there was not repetitive language. So I can't speak to that. All I can say is that I wrote what is in the one about equality.
Well, I just find it very curious that we have these two proclamations side by side, one in defense of a beleaguered law enforcement career, opera, career situation across the country, including here in California and Delmar County. And then another one, which I didn't know there was an issue with regard to supportive equality and accountability. It seems to be that it's a given. Where does it, where's the genesis for coming up with this proclamation, Ms. Snow? Could you please help me?
I think it's common knowledge that there are concerns on equity and accountability across the nation at this time. And I provided this draft to the board and you were included in that June 23rd, my original email for consideration if the board wanted to make a statement on being on the same page with this, this language and these statements. So I hope that it is a given, but in this time, that's not something we can take for granted. And as, as a board of elected officials, it's really up to you to make that statement for us as a county if you choose to. And as, as a board of elected officials, it's really up to you to make that statement for us as a county if you choose to.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may. You know, this is the same discussion we had at our last meeting with Supervisor Berkowitz and why I weighed in on this. I mean, as Supervisor Gitlin stated, it's a given. That's the same thing that we did with law enforcement. I'm not quite clear and I'm sitting here scratching my head today. Yeah, okay, we can make these statements. We do do these proclamations. We could do these resolutions, but. As constitutional authorities of the federal and state governments, you know, these, these are things that we support. In particular, and we've made no qualms about not supporting them. We've now made some statements to that effect today. I guess they needed some clarity or resolution. But I'm, I'm just not clear. It does appear that the sentence that Supervisor Gitlin is referring to did. Come from Heather Snow's original document and made it into Supervisor Berkowitz's and yours document, which was, I guess, submitted to. To Chairman Hemmingson for approval, which that language was removed at some point, but I guess that's where that original language came from. So I'm scratching my head today. I mean, we can again, uh, make this proclamation and I'll be okay with it. But it again, as Supervisor Gitlin suggested, it's, it's common knowledge that this is where the board stands.
I'd like to respond to you Supervisor Howard.
About 100% Supervisor Howard. You make an excellent point. I've said that from the start. Just like the resolution supporting law enforcement, we have been supportive. And yet we need to reiterate that and we have done that. And now, uh, the same, along the same lines, all of a sudden, there has to be some big reason why we have this other proclamation. Go ahead Supervisor Gitlin.
Well Supervisor Howard, I don't see social workers being attacked, getting in headlocks, being assaulted, being. Their lives at risk. Maybe I'm wrong and maybe this happens on an everyday occurrence. All of a sudden Chairman Hemmingson, all of a sudden. But I see an overall, I see an overall malice that's going on in this country, which put, which puts our law enforcement at risk. And I don't see that same risk being associated with Department of Health and Human Services. So I find it curious. That item number 11 appeared juxtaposed on item number 10, and I find it a little bit inconvenient.
Well, if I may, if my memory serves me correctly, I mean, just a couple of years ago, weren't you making statements about people coming over the counters? In Health and Human Services?
Yes, Supervisor Howard, I was making.
This is exactly the point that Director Snow tried to make at our last meeting. Every person that works for this county is important. And this is why I really didn't want to go here, but we're going here now. I do not mind making these statements. I appreciate you bringing them up. Our employees will be acknowledged, but. I mean, the point you're trying to make, it applies to everybody here. Everybody who works for the county is at risk at some point in their profession. Just like they're serving during COVID-19 right now. So we're making this statement. I'm happy it's on here. Thank you, Director Snow, but.
I respectfully disagree with you Supervisor Howard on the exigency of protecting law enforcement. It's a little bit different category. We'll just have to agree to disagree, sir.
Chairman, may I make something, a statement on this because the administration was brought up on this one earlier?
Sure, go ahead, Jay.
So I, as far as reviewing this during a general review, and you're very aware of it. There are two very distinct statements being made here. And obviously, the board has continually supported law enforcement and public safety through budgeting. And doing their best to provide all of the safety equipment that has been requested. In regards to what Director Snow has put together, obviously, it's about diversity inclusiveness. But I would take issue with any statement saying that our first responders outside of public safety. Including our Health and Human Service workers, social workers, mental health people. Are not as important. All of our employees provide a service on a daily basis. Every one of them are important and do an important job. And I find it, just in my position, I want to make that statement extremely clear. That, you know, beyond just the diversity inclusiveness and. We don't want to be divided and we don't want to be silent, but I think that from a leadership standpoint, Director Snow has come forward. With something that reflects what we all believe in.
Thank you for that clarification, CEO.
Thank you, Jay.
And all those, you know, you know, this has to do with our frontline workers. These are the people that are out meeting the public and, and are face to face with them. Don't have to hide in their office and, and push their pencil and, you know, these are people that are out in the frontline dealing with the public. And, and they need to be acknowledged as well as law enforcement. And we've been supportive. This board has been supportive of all our employees, whether that's in law enforcement. You know, throughout the administration and, you know, I don't want to start naming departments because I'll forget somebody. All of the departments. You know, we have been supportive of and try to be positive. And to try to bring that negativism. And I can understand that with some of the posts that Mr. Gitlin makes that. There's probably only a certain group of people that he's supportive of, but these are our, these are our workers. These are our people. So. With that, Kylie, was there, was there another public comment?
Yeah, I have a written public comment. This one's also from Norma Williams. And it says, the Delmar County Employees Association, SEIU 1021, concur with this resolution. And agree that as county employees and citizens, we shall strive to rise above intolerance, division, acrimony and ignorance. And through our public service, support and promote tolerance, unity, understanding and mutual acceptance and respect.
Okay, thank you. So we're looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further public comment, Kylie?
I'm just going to give it a couple more seconds online.
Okay.
And Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, and if there's no further comments from board members, would you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Present.
I'm sorry, could you clarify? Is that a yes?
Yes, it's a present. I am present. That's my vote.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, could you clarify your vote, please Supervisor Gitlin?
Absolutely. I'm present here at this meeting and it's, and you of all should know. Okay, sir, are you going to talk or you going to let me talk?
Well, I'm going to talk until you either vote yes or abstain.
I vote present.
Joel, is that, is that a proper vote?
I, I don't think we could do anything other than treat that as an abstention.
Okay.
So we have a four, oh, and a one. Is that correct? A four yes, one no, and one abstain. Correct, Joel? Thank you.
I, I have four yes and just one abstain.
That's correct. Okay, thank you. And with that, Kylie, did we miss anything that I skipped over? Are we done?
Um, I'm not, no, I don't see anything else, but I'm not sure if Heather wanted that proclamation read aloud. It's usually with proclamations, we read them aloud. I'm not sure if she wanted that or if we're just good with the passing and adopting of it.
Whatever the board pleases.
Yeah, if you want to read it, that's fine Kylie. You can read both of them if you want. I don't have them in front of me, so I have to read them off my screen. So if you would read them, that would be fine. They're pretty short.
Okay, give me just a couple of seconds. I don't have them in front of me either. I apologize. Okay, so this is the proclamation in support of equality and accountability. Whereas the Board of Supervisors believes in a diverse and inclusive Delmar County, one that affords all of our residents the opportunity to thrive. And as an organization, we respect and value diverse backgrounds and seek to support under representative groups by giving them equal access to speak up in our community. And whereas the Board of Supervisors expresses gratitude and appreciation to those of various races and backgrounds who have come together in Delmar County. To hold peaceful protests, standing in oppositions of injustice and intolerance. Your voices matter and are heard. And whereas several of our public facing departments participate in ongoing training focused on inclusion, the education and celebration of cultural diversity. And recognizing and addressing implicit bias. And whereas Delmar County will maintain high standards regarding training methods and protocols for all, for all departments. Our agencies train on inclusion and tolerance and work closely with behavioral health professionals to consider mental and developmental needs in their decision making. And whereas we refuse to be silent or divided, we refuse to let ignorance, injustice or hate prevail. And we can fight ignorance by spreading knowledge, supporting our neighbors, being patient and kind with each other, and most of all, showing compassion and respect for each other. And now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar County Board of Supervisors do hereby support equality, ongoing cultural diversity training and accountability. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar, State of California, this 14th day of July, 2020. And I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. And the resolution is Delmar County Board of Supervisors in support for law enforcement and public safety. Whereas the Board of Supervisors continue to prioritize the county's public safety employees, commonly called first responders. At the very highest level and carrying out the critical role of protecting and ensuring public safety. Whereas the Delmar County Sheriff's Department is one of 17,385 law enforcement agencies in the United States. Joins rural fire departments and emergency services acting in a combined team effort to risk lives and rescuing people, find themselves in dangerous circumstances. Render aid to the injured and protect the lives and safety of the public regardless of personal peril. Whereas the time has come to stand up and show support for Delmar County sworn law enforcement officers from the Delmar County Sheriff's Department. Crescent City Police Department, Pelican Bay State Prison Correctional Officers, California Highway Patrol, Delmar County Probation Department. California State and National Park Wardens, California State Department of Fish and Wildlife Game Wardens. Yurok Tribal Police, US Coast Guard and US Forest Services Officers. Whereas the Board of Supervisors values protecting all members of our community. The Board believes law enforcement is the cornerstone of a safe and prosperous community and is essential to keeping Delmar County family friendly. Attractive for visitors and supportive of businesses and recognizing there are systemic issues that need to be addressed by agencies nationwide. Whereas Delmar County will continue to maintain, maintain the very highest level of standards regarding training and protocols of law enforcement. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors continues to support all law enforcement agencies and first responders who selflessly serve our community. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors, County of Delmar, State of California, this 14th day of July, 2020.
Thank you Kylie. I appreciate that. Is, is that it?
That is it.
Okay, we are adjourned then. Thank you for participating.
Thank you. Have a good week.
Bye, bye, bye.